So, we're ready to start, Bill?
Okay, we're on. Let's call the order. Basalt planning and zoning, Tuesday, June 30th, 2020. Let's have a roll call.
Bill Maron?
Joe.
Joan Keefe?
Here.
Gino Rosetti?
Here.
Eric Volzak?
Here.
Tracy Bennett?
Here.
Bernie Grauer?
Here.
Rob Levitt?
Yes.
Okay, we have a quorum.
Alrighty, let's begin. Let's work on the minutes for June 16th, 2020. Does anyone have any changes or additions to make? If not, let's have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion approval.
Alright, we have a first by Gino, a second by Joan.
I second.
All in favor, do we need a roll call vote, Susan?
No. As long as we can see everybody, Joan needs to raise her hand. Okay. Alright, the minutes passes vote of zero to, seven to zero.
Alrighty, let's begin the Eagle County referral. PDA 9101 would spend if we could.
Yeah, thank you.
Senator James?
This item is a county referral. It's a request for comments from Eagle County on a development review application that they're considering for amendments to the Willets Bend Development PUD approvals for the Arch Dyson to construct housing. And they're proposing to construct 75 tax credit housing units on the northern portion of Willets Bend. And the property subject to the application is 4.6 acres in the Willets Bend development that is on the intersection of Willets Lane and Widget Street. So this area shown here on the map is the Willets Bend development. And they're proposing to remove these structures at the north end and create housing. The portion of the development adjacent to Willets Lane is currently three buildings of mixed-use development, live-work style. And the current Willets Bend approvals allow for 59,000 square foot of more development, with 10,000 of that being approved for residential. And so, so you know what the project currently looks like. Here's a photo. It's these buildings that are the different colors. There's a yellow one, a red one, and a blue one. And so, the applicant is proposing to do an amendment to allow for 75 new affordable housing units. That would be a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units. And they're all proposed to be tax credit housing with income and rent caps that would serve individuals and families making between 60% and 80% of the area median income, as is the case with, with all tax credit projects. Some of the other aspects of the application to note are that they're proposing to increase the allowable height in the PUD to 40 feet from 35. They've also indicated that they're going to have... Their engineering report includes that the remaining development in the approvals would actually generate 920 peak hour travel trips. Whereas, the proposed amendment for the housing would only have 687 trips. So that by doing the amendment, they're proposing that there would actually be a decrease in trips from the currently approved development on the site. And we can go into that in more detail. The applicants are proposing for the 75 new units to have an additional 123 parking spaces. And you can kind of see the layout of the 123 new parking spaces. Just to orient you, on the site plan, Willets Lane is down at the bottom here. And up at the top is some industrial development that's in the town. Staff has included some draft comments for P&amp;Z to consider this evening. They're in your packet. And I'd like to briefly go through those comments. So let me get down to the draft letter. So going through the draft letter, comment number one that's in there indicates that the P&amp;Z finds the application to be consistent with some of the housing objectives in the 2020 master plan. And that the location, which is within the urban growth boundary, is appropriate for urban-level development. Comment number two that we have in the draft letter encourages Eagle County to require a backup deed restriction on the affordable housing. Because the tax credit limitations expire after a certain amount of time, usually 30 to 40 years. And so, staff included that they have a backup deed restriction, which is what we did with the Roaring Fork Apartments in the tax credit project that has been done in the town. And that's been pretty effective. Comment number three that we have in the draft letter would support the aspect of the proposal in the site plan that allows for the potential for a future road to go through. And I'll go back to the site plan here. In the approved Willets Bend development as it is now, there is an easement that is approved. And it goes basically from the northern property line back to the southern property line. And it's for the potential for a future road to go through from Willets Lane back to the intersection of Original Road and Highway 82, through a couple of industrial properties that are to the north. And so, in the applicant's site plan, they propose to maintain that ability in the future for such a road connection, as they only have road and some parking area in that easement. So, that comment number three supports that. And in the access control plan that was approved by Eagle County, the town, and CDOT, it calls for that future road connection to be made. Comment number four, if we go back to the draft letter... Includes a concern about pedestrian access to transit and recommends that pedestrian-activated flashing signs be provided by the applicant on Willets Lane in both directions. Because really, the nearest location for a bus stop is the Hillcrest Drive bus drop. So, you basically have to get across Willets Lane to the Willets Trail, and then cross Highway 82 at the intersection of Two Rivers Road and Highway 82. And then walk to the Hillcrest Drive bus stop. So we think that there needs to be some pedestrian flashers to help people get across Willets Lane at that place. There's already a concrete crosswalk, so that, that hasn't been included in the comments. Comment number five in the draft letter includes that the applicant will be required to obtain a town access permit, because Willets Lane is a town street that's owned and maintained by the town. Comment number six in the draft letter speaks about parking and encourages the applicant be required to add parking or develop a part, and develop a parking management plan. The comment draws comparisons between the Roaring Fork Apartments and the... Let me just move this here, sorry. We've got a notice that came up. So the comment also includes a comparison between the Roaring Fork Apartments and the proposed developments parking. The Roaring Fork Apartments was required to have 1.7 spaces per dwelling unit. And that was for 56 one- and two-bedroom rental units. And the proposed project is proposed to contain 1.64 parking spaces per dwelling unit. And it's proposed to include some three-bedroom units. The town's experience with the Roaring Fork Apartments has been that, you know, basically their parking is, is always full. And they're right there on the BRT. So, staff believes that there's a need for some additional parking to be programmed into the development program for the 75 units. So that's what this comment reflects. Comment number seven in the draft letter includes that the applicant be required to pay the Willets Lane fee of $1,000 per unit that all development off of Willets Lane has been required to pay in the past. Comment number eight in the draft letter requires, recommends that applicant in Eagle County talk to Recycle about a good location for a bike-share station. And then, that the applicant be required to provide an easement for bike-share. And then, as you get into comment number nine in the draft letter, it recommends that Eagle County require the applicant to include a note in their lease agreements, putting the tenants on notice that there's industrial uses in zoning and development adjacent to the property. So this is a similar requirement that we've had of other developments in the town, where you've had housing adjacent to industrial development. Including the 525 Basalt Avenue development, we had a similar requirement in that development. Item number 10 in the draft letter recommends that Eagle County consult with CDOT about whether a new access permit is required for the development. This is a standard comment that we usually have in county referrals. A lot of them on Picking County in the Hollandier Hills area has this requirement. Comment number 11 in the draft letter recommends that Eagle County consult with the school district and establish a safe and efficient plan for school bus loading and unloading for the development. The thought behind this draft comment is that with 75 affordable housing units, and they're going to have some two- and three-bedroom units, there's probably going to be quite a few school kids. So they should be planning for school bus loading and unloading there, and how that's going to work. Item number 12, or comment number 12 in the draft letter indicates that there's a need for some infrastructure improvements to make this project work. And, and it recognizes that some of these infrastructure items are probably beyond the scope of the affordable housing. So it suggests that if the project goes forward, that Eagle County and the applicant engage with the town and potentially Raft to, to partner on some trail connectivity improvements. Those improvements being an improved pedestrian trail from the Two Rivers Road and Highway 82 intersection to the Hillcrest Drive bus stop. Because that is probably going to be the bus stop that would be used most by tenants of, of this project. And then, the second trail improvement that the town staff was thinking about is the trail that is in the CDOT right-of-way on the south side of Highway 82, that runs from the Willets Lane intersection all the way to Original Road and that bus stop. Think that there needs to be some improvement to that trail. It, it's just kind of a pioneered trail at this point. And, and so, to make it more formal trail would be necessary. And then, kind of comment number 13 that we have in the draft letter basically indicates that these comments are based on there being an affordable housing project on the site. And so, if the tax credits were not to be approved and obtained, and that they wanted to have an amendment, that they would have to come back for, for additional comments and referral from the town. So those are kind of the, the summary of the draft letter that we have in your packet for consideration. Staff would recommend that you take public comments and then provide discussion. The options for P&amp;Z this evening are that you could recommend that staff transmit the letter as drafted, or P&amp;Z could suggest amendments to the letter and then suggest that we submit the amended letter. The applicants were invited this evening, but they chose not to appear and make comments. So with that, staff would recommend questions.
Oh, just remind me, when we do the public comment, we'll enter Bill's letter.
Yeah, and we've got a letter or two to enter as part of the public comments when we get there.
Alright, thank you. Let's, I'm going to call on staff one at a time. James, could you drop the comment letter, so I can see a bigger picture of everybody?
Yeah, you bet.
While I do this, I'll call on you to ask questions of staff, and try and keep your questions to, just questions only, no opinions or comments. And we get to that section of the meeting after the public comment portion. So, Tracy, do you want to start?
Um, let's see. Yeah, what triggers the road connection into, on that one end, into the industrial?
There, there's...
There's that road, and it's, it, it's not going to, a through road, but what triggers it to possibly be a through road?
Well, the access...
You know what I'm talking about?
Yep, sure. The access control plan that was adopted by Eagle County, the town of Basalt, and CDOT, I think it's from 2002, includes a recommendation that a through road be, be added. And then, as part of the Willets Bend approvals that are currently in place, they were required to provide an easement for such a road connection. The town and Eagle County don't currently have easements on the properties to the north. So there's, there's no actual trigger there, but, you know, if, if the properties to the north were to redevelop, there, there could be opportunity to get those easements in place.
James, what I have here from Richard Davies is if and when the neighboring properties are developed, a vehicle connection shall be provided from Original Road to Willets Lane, as stated in the Highway 82 access control plan.
True.
It says shall be provided.
So, so that would be our opportunity, when those properties develop, to, to get the easements that are necessary. But we don't have those easements.
Well, I think it's referring to this property.
No, you already have the easement.
This is one of the property.
You, the...
I don't think so. It's the other, it's those other industrial parcels up there.
Yeah, we, we currently have easement on the Willets Bend property, which, which is this property. But we don't have the necessary easements on the properties to the north at this point. So if they were to redevelop in the future, we would have the potential to get the, the necessary easements at that point.
But it would, most, you know, I think, it depends what they're doing, whether we can actually acquire the easements at that time. You know, the, the, the first step would be to try to preserve the right-of-way for development. And it may be one of those improvements that requires the town to acquire, to purchase property, both from a couple different property owners in the area. So, it's, we've had, there's a contract, by the way, for, for purchase right now. And kind of what they are, are proposing wouldn't necessarily lead to a dedication. So, you know, we're, we don't have it in a capital improvement plan right now to, to make that connection. But it's on the long-range plan to be able to do it, if that, if that really helps.
Okay.
I think that's pretty clear. I'll say everyone that one point that Rob had, that there's nothing for it to connect to, we required him to do it, which is my understanding. Is that correct?
Yeah, but we've, we've included in the draft letter a comment that basically indicates that we support the fact that they are planning for it as part of their, their development. And not, not encumbering that easement.
Alright. Tracy, any more questions?
Um, yeah, one more.
Okay.
The, the current Willets Bend buildings, did I see, do they have solar panels up there in there? Is that part of their deal?
You know, I'm not sure, to be honest.
Yes.
No? Yes?
Yes.
Who said yes?
Rob, Rob said yes, they do.
So there are solar panels there?
Yes.
Okay. Well, given some of the things that we've talked about from Mid Valley... Well, given some of the things that we've talked about from Mid Valley, I would like to encourage that they continue within that part of the project too. So, just one of my thoughts. Other than that, I don't have anything else at the moment.
Thank you, Tracy. Joan, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I totally agree with Tracy. I'm interested in learning a little bit more about that other way to ingress and egress into that area. There's so much pressure on Willets Lane and also about the sustainability as we continue building, building out. I would like to know more. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just to clarify, the traffic trips that you mentioned, those are theoretical, correct? They don't exist today?
Correct.
So they had approvals for nine hundred, these six hundred trips that are less than the nine hundred are still six hundred additional, correct?
Correct.
Than what currently exists?
Yes, that's correct.
That's just one clarification.
Yes.
All right. Is that it, Eric? All right, thanks. Rob, do you have any questions of staff or the applicant?
Well, I'd like to follow up on Eric's question. By my math, they're counting on eight point five six trips per day. And I thought Susan told me we use ten or twelve trips per day.
Single family, I mean, I
Yeah, there is a difference between single family and multifamily development.
You know, the south side traffic study used different rates for the different units.
And there's a certain amount of internal capture that's usually provided in traffic studies. You know, they didn't go into that much detail in their engineering report, so I can't tell you what, how much internal capture that they're proposing. Internal capture means a certain amount of trips stay within the area and don't leave the area. So they, sometimes they reduce the number of trips generated by a certain percentage.
Single-family home is ten or twelve?
Uh, single-family home, I think, is usually ten.
Okay, thanks.
All right, that's it, Rob?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Bernie, do you have any questions of staff or the applicant?
No, I did not. Sorry, can I interrupt you?
Yes.
It's Gino, I haven't asked a question.
Yes.
Thank you. Just for, more of a point of clarification, my understanding is that this letter that we are hoping to approve goes to the Eagle County Community Development, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I am correct also that this is really under their jurisdiction, this project?
That's correct as well, we're a referral.
Then I just really want to compliment you on the thoroughness of the questions and the state comments and recommendations you've made.
Thank you, Gino. Bernie, are you done? Do you have any more questions?
No, I have no other questions.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I have myself a question. Is this going to be, to fully build out the PUD? Is this, is this the, all the rest of the development within that?
The way I understand it, it is the rest of the development, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. And also to Joan's point, I'm doing a tax credit project in Carbondale right now and when you do that within Colorado, they do require environmental commitment far in excess of what we require as a town. Almost the point of making it unaffordable, really, honest about it. But yeah, they, they require a thing called the Enterprise Green Community Standards, which are pretty intense. And you have lower category housing, it's hard to meet that without taking away quality of life. Anyway, so we are done with questions. Let Susan open this up to public comments and whatever method you choose for tonight and this is an actual public hearing.
Okay, so again, this is just our public comment period, it's not an official public hearing. So far, I have two requests for us to call them, but I did want James to enter into the record the email that we received from Bill Hegberg, who lives in the River Oaks subdivision. And he started with correspondence to Eagle County Planner, who referred it to their Eagle County Engineering Department. And Bill wanted us to enter that into the record and then Ricky Davies from the Engineering Department sent along some additional comments. So James, do you want to summarize it or anything additional?
Yeah, Bill Hegberg's email mainly related to the traffic impacts and what was included in the traffic reporting. There were some questions about a hundred and fifty units. And I think what Bill Hegberg is asking about there is the parcel five of Sopris Meadows, which is just behind the Basalt Industrial Park over there. And so there seemed to be some confusion about the trips being generated and was wondering if those trips included parcel five. And then Ricky Davies explained that the actual trips per day that they included in their application were just from this project and they were making the point that they're generating less trips with the proposed development than with the approved development on the site. And so that's kind of the explanation that's in the email from Ricky Davies back to Bill And then Bill Hegberg in his comments also encourages that there is the need for the connection from Original Road to Willets Lane and that they should prove that they're able to do that here in the future.
So with that, I'll do the first person, John O'Donovan, and I'll place his call first. And then, so let me do that. Oh, just let me make an announcement. Yeah.
Before you do it, yeah, I want to clarify a little bit about what this actually is to the general public. This is not an approval from us to the applicant. This is just us as a recommending body and to the Eagle County Planning Commission and they may or may not take our comments. This is just as a referral for our intergovernmental agreement. So please temper your comments to that end. Thank you.
And then you might also just make the statement about the three minutes.
Yeah, oh yeah. Also keep your comments to three minutes and please state for the record where you live.
Okay.
Thank you.
So this is our public comment period and there's still an opportunity to let us know that you want to speak. Please email planning@basalt.net or text nine seven oh three seven nine fifteen fourteen with your name and your phone number if you want us to call. So the first person that I'm going to call is John Donovan. And let me place that. Hey, John, this is Susan Felb from the town of Basalt. You are on
Hi, Susan.
Hi, you're on grassroots now. I don't know if you can see the screen. Bill Marin is chairing the meeting and this is your, you know, opportunity to make comments.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you very much, everybody, for listening to. My name is John O'Donovan. I live in unit four one four of Willets Bend. I completely understand that you are given an advisory role and the ultimate decision is just made by Eagle.
Thank you.
Did you want to add anything more, John?
I'm sorry, I was just, I heard the screen. Yes, I'm sorry about that. So my objection or my concerns, just I just want to clarify my background. I lived in two employee housing units in Aspen, so I've got no issues with employee housing. My objection really to this project is one, it totally disregards what I signed into and what I invested to. This development is very, very different. Again, as discussed in the beginning, this is a mixed-use development, artist, community, light industry and residential. This new seventy-five units, just the density, lack of green space, the traffic, there's a number of objections I have and I just want to put them on the record, realizing that you can just advise Eagle, but I'd like you to strongly advise, if you could, that this project is really not in, it's, I don't think it's going to be beneficial for any of the residents, existing or new residents. And that's really what I'd like to add.
All right. Thank you very much. Any further comments?
John, are, we're going to go ahead and close off unless you had something else to add.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Oh, no, that was it, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that question was right, right to me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, okay. The next person that I'm going to call is Colleen Collins, so I'll place her call now. Hi, Colleen, this is Susan Felb. You're live on grassroots.
Hi, Susan.
Hi, this is your opportunity for a public comment on the Willets Bend PUD amendment.
Hi, great, thank you, Susan. So I'm a resident, I own a residential property at Willets Bend and Can you hear me?
Yeah, that's, that's the delay that I was explaining on the phone to you, you could hear me in the background.
Let me use, okay, so sorry. So what I've got is I just wanted to comment that there are twenty-four owners in our HOA and we, we just heard about this meeting today and we're just hearing about this project in the last two weeks. So we're in position where we feel like it's just been sort of put out to us in a very rushed, already very progressed situation. And for the record, I wanted to just make sure that it was stated that our HOA has not unanimously endorsed this project whatsoever. In fact, we only have one annual meeting a year and that meeting is scheduled for the end of July and at that time, we're actually going to, I think, have some sort of presentation from the Arch Diocese. So that's very important. We're kind of, you know, at the tail end of a project that's already well underway and as owners, stakeholders in this development, that's been a bit of a shock. I also wanted to say that we all have bought into a mixed use. We bought into live-work, artisan, light industry, certain percentage residential, certain percentage commercial and our properties, our purchase, everything has been geared towards that. So we're just wanting to make sure that we, as stakeholders, are being heard properly and have a chance to digest this because it is all very new and rather shocking. With that, I will just say that the scale, it is very large. I like John and not against having affordable housing or having a mix of it. I think it's very important to have the right scale. I think it's important to share it within the community and I think that the infrastructure are very important, the traffic, the parking, we already have some issues with that now. And I don't really see the numbers working, the nine hundred and twenty down to six hundred and eighty-seven for residential. The tree farm has been approved and that's another very, very big impactful project. And I would just ask this P and Z commission to really look at the density more carefully, look at the parking, look at the trail connections. I think it's very important that it be a walking community and a biking community. People like to go over to Whole Foods and not have to take the road all the way around. People like to ride their bikes. The other projects that are residential in the neighborhood seem to have a lot of amenities, green belt, tennis courts. I just want to make sure that it's done well, that it's vital, it's in scale and that all of the infrastructure and needs are really looked at and that we, as the people who bought into a certain approved PUD, are not left behind in this process. So that would probably be all I have to say. Oh, and height, and height, height is really, I think that's so important here in this valley that we not have big shadows casting down from increased height. And I think that's all that I want to say tonight and I really appreciate you taking the call.
Thank you very much. Susan, do we have another?
No, let me just double-check all my devices. I don't have any more text messages and let me just double-check my email. I don't have any more email or texts from the public.
Alrighty, thank you. Let us go through and have Commissioner comments on this. And I will start with Bernie. Bernie, do you have any comments to make about this particular project and any additions you'd like to see on the conditions?
Well, I'll just say that having just come through the master plan process of 2020, we found that encouraging and developing affordable housing is the number-one goal of the community input. So it's certainly, they're coming before, you know, our organization is very sympathetic to the goals of providing this tax credit affordable housing and most efficient means is the apartment multifamily housing. And this seems to be a fitting setting. So I think staff has done a good job in assessing the issues, particularly around traffic, parking and pedestrian access, as well as bicycle access that need addressing. And I have, I'd be very pleased to sign the letter on the referral.
All right, thank you very much. Gino, do you have any comments to make on this or any additions or subtracts to the um
I would echo what Bernie said. I think it was, I think staff did a great job and I'm comfortable.
All right, thank you. Rob, do you have any comments to make on this?
Yes, I do. And Bernie, I'm sorry, you can't be for this project if you're against developing the Meyer property. They're identical situations. It's too far from public transport. You're looking at a stoplight that gets backed up at eight o'clock in the morning, every morning, because I go from that stoplight to school and then to your stoplight and they're both backed up. So this project, this development started out at sixteen residential units in two thousand and six. That was amended to thirty units in two thousand and ten. They're now proposing seventy-five units added to the existing twenty. So that project has gone from sixteen residential units to ninety-five. Six times as big, that's unconscionable. Think about where that bus stop is. It's across Highway eighty-two. Okay, Bernie, we were on council together when we approved seven million dollars that we took from our reserve fund to build the underpass so we didn't have people running across the highway to catch the bus. You can't put that density of housing across the highway from the bus stop. Think about our master plan. Think about our master plan. We want density near high-speed bus lines, places where you could cross the highway safely, which is Old Town and which is Willetts. It's not between the two where you're going to have people running across with the six lanes of highway. The existing blue building, you can see from the rear grand trail, right, almost a mile away. They're now proposing forty-foot buildings that are going to go up with additional ten feet, so fifty feet tall buildings they're proposing for that space. That is not in line with anything else in Willetts, anywhere. So it's too many people, it's too tall. The traffic impact needs to be looked at in conjunction with, um, Sopris Meadows and what's happening right now. Um, and none of these points were touched in the letter, which kind of disappoints me.
Are you, is that, is that it, Rob? Are you done?
Um, crossing Highway two, and then finally just point twelve in the letter. I, I have some grammatical issue. Quote, "Because the town's limited staff, it would be great if another entity could take over the permitting and maintenance for the above improvements." I, I, I think we need to tighten that up.
All right, thank you, Rob. Uh, Eric, do you have any comments to make on this?
I, I do. I, I tend to agree with Rob's comments, but at the same time, I also know that we, we're not voting up or down on this proposal and I'd like our comments to be put forward. I, I tend to agree with Rob that, um, I would love to add another point in there about doing some sort of, um, uh, uh, overall, uh, survey of traffic, um, and issues dealing with the traffic light and the traffic light backing up and then, yes, having people, uh, go across the street for, for the closest mass transit. Um, I, I agree with Rob's point two. All our discussions in the master plan were about, uh, affordable housing close to mass transit. This is close, but not really because it's not very safe. Um, so I wouldn't mind throwing in a, a comment in there along those lines and following up with Joan and Tracy's points. Um, uh, and, and to your point, Bill, about the, the credits and the sustainability, maybe a reference to, since we already have a reference in the letter to the Roaring Fork Apartments about how they have found a way to do net zero apartments in conjunction with affordability, uh, employee housing, kind of could be a reference point, uh, that we refer them to, uh, something to work towards. Um, so I, I would, I would kind of, you know, sprout this line that we want to have something put forward to, to Eagle County, um, that's a little stronger, uh, for me than, than what's currently drafted, including, even though I think most of the letter's good, I just think we can tighten up a few points. So, that's it.
Right. Thank you very much. Uh, Joan, do you have any comments to make and you're on mute, by the way?
Yes, I do. Um, everyone's bringing up some really good thoughts that we need to consider. Um, my concern is that is, Willetts Lane is a town-managed road and the road, the access to original road is, is hypothetical, um, at best right now. Um, they have it in, but to get through the other properties, it, it's not a given. Um, so I, I question that. I would like more clarity on that, how that could ever be possible. And yes, getting to a bus stop over eighty-two is, um, pretty tricky. That's all I've got to say.
All right, thank you. Tracy, comment?
Um, yeah, lots of interesting points brought up. Uh, the safety of crossing eighty-two there with a substantially large project going in is questionable. Um, we need to look at that a little clearer. Um, I'd like to, uh, come, if there're going to be families in this unit, there, is there green space, like playground area? I, did I miss that? Because I, I don't know that I'm seeing much of that for kiddos. Um, uh, the height is an issue too. It seems to be a bit of a monstrosity going in with what is there now. Um, I agree with your points in the letter. I know we're referrals, but yeah, it's, uh, access across the highway to the bus stop's a little concerning and some gr- more green space would be nice. Uh, but if, rest of the letter is good, so. Guess that's it for me.
Thank you, Tracy. Um, I'd like to add a few comments of mine. First off, um, I, I hear what you're saying, Eric, about the, about the, um, uh, the environmental components of this. And I think one way to attack this would be, um, the, uh, the, the enterprise green community rules circle around this but don't directly state it. And we could add language saying that this, we, we would like this to be a net zero-ready project. Now, that's a nebulous term, there is no real definition of, of that. The, um, the DOE doesn't have it, the state doesn't have it, but we can still come to some understanding of what that is and that gives them a lot of wiggle room, but still it, it states our intention. But, um, also, um, to the next point, I want to talk about just affordable housing and density in, in, in general. Um, and I'm going to start off with my standard refrain about this and this is a, to me, it's about having a landing place for our children who graduate from college and, um, you know, I have, uh, uh, my oldest is just about ready to start grad school, they're going again, but we, we'll be back as always and, um, you know, but I'd like to say that this is more than just about a-
Minute fifteen.
This is about, this is about our, Bernie, he's mute. Um, this is about our children and having a place to land and I understand with these projects and since I do these for a living, um, affordable housing really lives at the eyes upon an economy of scale. And we have such a huge problem with affordable housing that I really believe that, um, as such a deficit as per the, um, uh, the, uh, the Valley White Housing Studies, um, you know, it's going to take us a long time to get to seven hundred units that we need today if we find the perfect place, the perfect place where it's ea- easy to cross the highway and there's playgrounds and such other great stuff. Um, and as far as the height, I can see this bedroom, you know, uh, the, this is going to be like right in front of my house. You know, I'm willing to live with it because I think this is a need that's so intense that, um, that, uh, this is, this is where our community needs to address itself. And so I feel very strongly personally that this is where we put our eggs into a basket, right here with this sort of thing. Um, and they're going to use the bus stop that's right in front of my house and, and I think they're all grownups and they can cross the street. Um, there may be kids, my kids can cross the street, they already do. Um, so I think that, that, those are valid concerns, but, you know, we're all big boys and we have been able to put our big boy pants on and deal with these things and I'd like to have more people able to take care of these things on their own. That's my own personal thought. So with that being said, do we have, um, a, someone who would want to put forth a motion on this?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
When this letter is edited and reconfigured, do we get to see it before it goes out?
Are you asking staff, Rob?
You know, you can, we can, we can send it to you and you can, you know, you could make a motion and, and we edit. We just have to be careful, uh, we can't have a meeting without having a meeting. So if, if you guys start to have a problem with the letter, uh, we probably need to convene like a special meeting or something to, to look at it because we can't really vote by email.
I mean, we threw a lot of stuff out here and I, I can't vote to approve it until I see it.
Well, we could, you could, um, I'm just trying to think in real time and you could make a motion of things that we want to include in the letter and we amend the letter and we can send it out to you and if you guys have a, a problem with the letter, we can try to have a, a special meeting, um, before we send it out.
Well, for instance, we're just a referral, so by definition, they have lots of wiggle room, which we have to resuggest. I don't think we need to build it into the letter. Uh, we can ask for sustainability, net zero, and they still have wiggle room.
Just like the council has wiggle room when you guys make recommendations to the council. I mean, they take it under advisement.
But Rob, would you be okay, we, tonight, we say we approve the letter with an additional one, two, three points about a traffic study, a comment about sustainability, net zero, and another comment about addressing the Highway eighty-two mass transit connection, uh, you know, crossing. Is that enough or are you still going to be opposed at that point or?
That's getting warmer. Um, but it, it's still grown too big from what was originally approved for me to, you know, not even mention that.
We don't give it thumbs up or thumbs down, we just give them a referral letter.
Yeah.
No, but we can say we're concerned with product, the, the project being six times the original approval. We did it at Ace Lane.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm still looking for a motion. I would make a motion to recommend, uh, transmitting the letter to Eagle County for staff recommendations.
All right, I'd be, um, looking for a, uh, a second on that. Eric, I'm with, Bernie? Okay.
I, I, I would second that motion.
Would either of you, um, entertain the idea of adding a net zero, uh, Article fourteen?
That would be fine with me.
Gino, would you be willing to do a net zero-ready Article fourteen?
Sure.
Okay. Um, all right, we, I, we have a motion, we have a motion, um-
And we're going to do this one with roll call, okay?
Yes.
And so right now, the motion is to approve the letter as drafted with a comment about the, the building being net zero-ready. That's all, it doesn't include the other two comments that were made.
Yes.
Okay. So do you want me to read the roll?
Yes, please.
Bill Maron?
Yes.
Joan Keith?
Not clear on this. Um, I really want to address the issue on the traffic.
So then you vote, no. Okay.
Just no.
Gino Rosetti?
Yes.
Eric Volzick?
No.
Tracy Bennett? Bernie Grauer?
Yes.
Rob Levitt? So it passes four to three.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Um, let's see, are we at, uh, Commissioner comments and staff updates? Um, does anyone have any comments to make before, uh, staff update comes? Anybody? Hi, Susan, you have an update?
Uh, you know, we've just been really busy. We've got additional building permit information in for Studdman. Uh, Takaw has its foundation permit, um, and we've been getting a lot of comments regarding parking in Willetts Town Center, uh, seeming to be, um, quite a few inquiries, uh, for, for land use and, um, you know, applications, a, a lot of big ones and small ones, uh, you know, and kind of reminding, uh, the council, we kind of, we don't have a meeting yet for a time yet for our joint meeting with the town council. Uh, we kind of have the mandate from you that we'd like to do that in person, so we don't, haven't quite figured out the logistics of that yet. Uh, anything else we should add, James?
Dealing with a lot of zoning complaints and, and, you know, that, that adds to it. But, but nothing, we, we've got, uh, the next big application you'll, you'll see is, uh, Saint Vincent Church, uh, probably in early August.
Okay, I, I have a question for staff. Is, is the Jadwin parcel still alive?
Um, I heard, heard from the applicants, uh, earlier this week, they're, they're working on concepts at this point, is what I heard.
So the answer's yes? As far as you know?
As far as I know, yeah, potentially they're working on it.
Any news on Sopris Meadows five?
Haven't heard anything on Sopris Meadows five. You know, they had submitted an application for completeness, uh, quite a while ago. Um, we gave them completeness notes and they, they never pursued it after that.
And is Stotz Mill fully platted and approved?
Stotz Mill is not fully platted. Um, they have the documents to a good point where they could record. Um, they're, they're working with the ditch company, the Home Supply Ditch Company on some items that, um, were of concern to the ditch company, so, so they're working through that to get to a plat, a final plat, uh, recording.
Any other, uh, staff updates? If not, we can get a motion to, uh, adjourn.
Move.
Okay, we have a, a first to adjourn, we have a second. Eric, we've, Gino first, Eric second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you.
Have a great evening.
Good.
You, you too. Bye.
Goodbye.
Cut it off.